Send Marty back, will you? Camera again. Marty up front, need him to run the camera. Somebody else in here is an AV guy. So you want to go turn it on. You have the cameras on. Here we go. Call the Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, City Council Committee to hold the order. The clerk will call the roll.
Brereton.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Porter will be absent. Radcliffe. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Under public comment, public forum, we have none this evening. Under reports, officers, boards, and special committees. One, two, and three, about building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, we have none. Building, planning, and zoning new business, we have none. Under public works unfinished business, we have none. But under number four, public works, we have the body of this evening's agenda. Director Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Up first, leaf machine replacement for the Street Department this year. Our current budget includes $85,000 in our capital line item for the purchase of a snow blower. We've reviewed several of the snow blowers, and we've determined that a blower, a snow blower, to best fit our needs is going to be in the $150,000 range. The reason for the difference in the budget pricing is twofold. One, size, we've looked at the models, we've looked at, an X-size bigger from the one that we have, I think will be a much more efficient operation for us. And also, the new models have to have Tier Four compliance, EPA compliance, and that's about a $10,000 to $15,000 price increase to make the Tier Four environmentals. So what I'm recommending to do is basically switch, flip-flop, this year's purchase and next year's purchase, which next year we had in the budget for a leaf machine. So I'd like to move that up to this year and purchase that now, and then we'll budget, rebudget through the budget process for a snow blower for next year. We have received two bids for a new leaf machine from R Now, a Dinkmar, and a Benell Industries' Titan Pro. The Dinkmar's using me a $61,425. I would recommend we approve the little bid from R Now Incorporated for a Dinkmar Curb Runner Leaf Machine in the amount of $61,425, and this will be paid for from the capital fund line item, 41-5-752-8200.
Motion to approve. Make that motion. Motion by Alderman Crawford, second.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
Just to add a footnote, this leaf machine, we currently have three leaf machines. The one that this one will replace is one that we home-built. We took an old air compressor, and we took an old blower that we salvaged from Silver's back in the day and put it together, so we've had it for a number of years. So this new one will be a great improvement over that one.
Attorney Drell, you have a comment?
Did you seek more than two bids, or just the two?
Leaf machines are getting harder and harder to find. There's basically these two companies, these two machines, so these are the bids we got.
Are you still processing?
That works. Okay.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So this is that big thing that they swing back and forth that picks up all the ones on the curb, right?
Yes, this is the walk-behind model that's got, it takes the guy in the back to suck him up, correct.
Anybody else? None, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Thank you.
Next up is our Appleton Forest Main Extension, a change order request. Unfortunately, the Apollo Trenchless, they've started the Appleton Road Forest Main Extension project, and they were using a jetting assembly to make the bore hole for the sanitary sewer extension under the Kishawaki River. About approximately 100 feet into the bore, they've encountered rock cobble, which did not show up. We had soil borings done on either side of the river in anticipation to make sure, try to determine what kind of materials they were going through. Those borings did not show rock cobble, but unfortunately, they've run into some rock cobble. And that's what that's caused the drilling machine to, once they've hit that cobble now, they cannot keep going through it. It keeps bouncing off the cobble and wants to come out. So they are recommending that they need to change to a jetting assembly, from a jetting assembly to the air hammer assembly, which will require more time and effort to complete that bore hole. And they've submitted the change order request in the amount of $32,919.50 to cover that additional cost. The change order was reviewed by CES, our engineers on the project, and recommended for approval. And I would recommend approval of change order number one from Apollo Trenches in the amount of $32,919.50 for the Appleton Forest Main Extension. This work will be paid for from sewer connection fees, 0510.
Motion out of committee, or, excuse me. I have a motion by Alderman Snow. Second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. This is one of those dang if you do, dang if you don't. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved.
Next up is a sluice gate replacement for the WFTP main equipment building. This comes back around, this project in itself was included as part of the IEPa loan project overall for the secondary digested repairs and the main equipment building repairs. However, as you know, we did not make it through the process this past year for the EPA loan, so we're in the revolving loan application process for this year. However, we probably won't know for sure if we've secured that loan until probably fall of 2020, almost a year from now, not quite a year from now. So I think it's important to move forward on the sluice gate removals or replacements now. I don't know if I can wait another 10 to 12 months to get that work done. So what you have in front of you is the work order from Baxter and Woodman to complete the, finish the engineering for that part of it, and to get that, put a bid package together to get just those three sluice gates that are in the main equipment building replaced. Those sluice gates is what directs the flow, once it comes in on the lower level of the main equipment building, that's what directs the flow to our raw wastewater pumps and pumps it throughout the treatment plant. So right now, they're in the open position, which is good, that's where they need to be. However, if we need to close them to do maintenance or repair work on any of the pumps, we can't do that right now. So we need to get this work done. I would recommend approval of the design and engineering work order from Baxter and Woodman in the amount not to exceed $7,400 to complete the engineering design for the replacement of the three sluice gates in the main equipment building. This work will be paid for from line item 61-5-820-6190.
Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Frank. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Freeman.
So this is, this isn't to actually replace them, this is just the, to design, engineer them, correct?
Yeah, it's to finish up and basically put the bid specifications and the drawings together to do that specific task. They've got part of that work done already because it was included in the overall project, but they weren't finished with this. So we're basically going to pull this component out of that overall project and make it its own little standalone project. So once this work is done, then we'll go through the bidding process, so I'll be back in front of you guys with the bids to do the work.
Additional questions or comments? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved.
Next up is our Urban and Community Forestry Grant Award. Memo in your packet, we recently applied for an urban and community forest grant to plant 69 trees along Appleton Road from Sixth Street to US Route 20, primarily adjacent to our snow storage area. Attached to the memo is our grant award letter. We were successful in that application in the amount of $12,815. The 50% local match requirement will be through in-kind services provided by the Street Department, so the grant will pay for the actual purchase of the trees and our in-kind services, planting the trees, watering the trees, maintaining the trees, is what will make up our 50% match. I would recommend accepting the Urban and Community Forestry Grant in the amount of $12,815 from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and the US Forest Service.
Motion to approve. Alderman Crawford, second. Alderman Brereton. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Yes, Alderman Snow.
So what kind of timeframe are we looking at in this particular deal?
The work will be done in the spring of 2020, and we have to have everything finished up and submitted to the grant for reimbursement by, I believe it's July, there's a date in July that's our target.
Alderman Snow.
So we'll see this as an expenditure and then a reimbursement at some point?
That's correct. So again, we will go out and get pricing for the trees, I'll be back in front of you to review and approve the pricing for the project.
Motion to approve acceptance of the grant. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Approved unanimously. Brings us to item E, the Hardeman Annexation Agreement Amendment. Attorney Drell.
So in 2003, Mayor Brereton hired me, and one of the first crazy projects they had me working on was the Hardeman Annexation. And that was a process that took a long time, and the actual annexation agreement is literally a book. And as can be imagined, at the time in 2003, when everything was going gamebusters, we all had these grandiose plans of how the area was going to develop. Roughly what you're looking at with the Hardeman Annexation is north of Kishawaki River, a little bit stop at the St. Louis Road, a little top of State Street, west of the St. Louis Road, and actually, a part across the Charlotte, which was the original annexation. And that original agreement was really one of the first times the city was fairly creative in design standards for homes and things like that, had different areas or phases that were going to be developed. And the city actually extended water and sewer out there. We bonded that. Those bonds have since been retired and paid, and that also allowed the developments on the east side of the St. Louis Road to develop, as well as portions of the landmark development north of State Street. But at the time, we all anticipated a very rapid build-out. So there are various promises from each party in that agreement of things that were going to be done. So for example, the city promised to complete two phases of sewer plants and three phases of water extension plans, the last one being erection of a water tower, which if this whole area had built out, we assumed we would need. The developer agreed to pay certain recapture fees, basin fees, and things like that to pay for their portion of the water and sewer. And one of the things we all thought was, well, for sure, this thing will be built out by 2017, 2018, so the developer was going to promise to have, even if they hadn't built all the homes, all of their required contributions monetary for those water and sewer paid by that timeframe, by December of 18. And the city promised to have all the phases of the water done, including the water tower, done by December of 18. Lo and behold, we had a recession. Water tower didn't get built, it's not even needed, and not needed in the foreseeable future. And frankly, a lot of the homes didn't get built, and what we did complete, phases one and two of the water, and phases one and two of the sewer. The developer came to us, frankly, and brought us to attention the fact that they owe approximately, they owe exactly $530,778.42 in basin fees for the phases one and two water and phase one and two sewer that were due as of December 18. And we realized we never built the water tower, which we would have had to build in the annexation agreement. And so what we thought would be a good compromise and way to solve the problem is they have agreed to pay us the entire amount of that $530,000 and change right away. Now satisfy all of their obligations for the entire property for phase one and two sewer, phase one and two water. We would agree, and they would agree, that we don't have to build the tower yet, the water tower. And we will not build that until such time as it's needed. For the remaining phase three fees for the water tower, we would collect that as the property develops pursuant to an ordinance we've since adopted imposing those fees on all land in the area. So we'll still recover those fees in the future, it's just not that they're not going to be paid upfront. They also requested, and makes sense, in the original development, I said there's a lot of design features, there were some berms and a bike path that was to be built that also was supposed to be completed, but they haven't even built the homes yet or subdivided the property, and frankly, we'd have to tear those out to develop the property in the future anyway. So it doesn't make sense to build those until that area develops. So what we've brought to you is a proposed amendment to the annexation agreement. And it would simply change the agreement to require the Hardeman Company, what we call now the remaining owners, because of course, it's been, people have died, and it's been shifted around, and there's new entities involved, but they would pay the entire remaining amount of the $530,778.42 upfront. They would relieve us from our obligation to build the water tower until we see fit, and we relieve them of their obligation to pay the phase three water tower fees until it's required under our ordinances. And then they would build the berm and the walking path when that area develops. Frankly, I don't see it developing anytime soon, but this would cover it if it does develop. And just so they understand, the annexation agreement actually expires in 2023. So, are there any questions?
Alderman Stevens.
The $530,000, will that go into our water fees or the general fund?
That's water and sewer.
Water and sewer fees, okay. So that'll be there for later building fees for all that, then? Good.
There's no questions?
The recommendation would be the advances, so I'll have to go to an ordinance form, come back to you next week for first reading. There'd be a second reading at the first meeting in December, and at that time, we'd also have to have a public hearing, no different than doing a regular annexation agreement, and you'd pass at that point. But this point, the recommendation would be move this on for, in for ordinance form.
Alderman Snow.
Because I'm kind of down. So we get, they have an obligation to pay the $530,000 to pay for what amounts to infrastructure, which is water tower and the ability to provide water and that. So is it in our best interest? Because prices never go down. I don't know how much the last well, or do we have to build a tower or just a well? What's the scoop there? And are we better off trying to do something now while we have the money to do it?
No. The $530,000 and change is contractually obligated to pursuant to the existing annexation agreement. There's absolutely no need for, and frankly, the infrastructure is in place for the phase one and two water and phase one and two sewer. The mains are. Obviously, the infrastructure and the subdivisions is not done yet. The water tower's just not needed yet. But I'll let Burns speak to that.
Right, so that $530,000 represents the cost that they are due us based on the improvements that we've built to date. So the cost for the tower that's yet to be constructed, that's going to be paid for by the, all the properties out there that are not developed yet, which is why we're deferring that basically, not going to make the requirement from them, but we're going to defer that to whoever controls the property at the time that we actually build that. So when we build that, put that water tower in, then we will take that cost and make that final cost part of the recapture agreements for those undeveloped lots.
And just, maybe I wasn't real clear on this one. The phase one, two water and sewer are complete, the way the agreement, and frankly, almost all of our subdivisions are developed, is those pays, those fees are paid at the time of building permit issuance. One of the things that we all agreed to back in 2003 that frankly was pretty smart, seeing as nobody anticipated the crash, was that even if the houses aren't built yet, triggering the payment of the fees in 2018, whether or not they're built, they had to pay the fees. So that's what triggered that requirement.
Motion to approve. Alderman Crawford, second. Alderman McGee. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I would note that Attorney Lockwood from the developer is present, but really, I don't know if he has any questions for.
Attorney Lockwood, would you have any comments?
No, I don't have this time. Thank you for considering our question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Thank you. Under number five, other, we have the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act Drug-Free Workplace Ordinance. Attorney Drell, you have the floor.
Okay, the state made a mess of things, as we all know. Go figure. What I have done, and was before you this evening, is amendment to our Drug-Free Workplace Ordinance. One of the things we're required to do in order to be able to receive federal grant monies, either directly from the federal government or through the state, is to have a drug-free workplace policy enforced, which we adopted as an ordinance. What I am proposing is certain amendments to that ordinance to take account of the new Cannabis Act. Now, I'll be very clear, there's nothing in federal law or state law requires us to do this, but quite frankly, I believe it makes sense to do it to basically make sure that ordinance is both compliant with federal law as well as with the new Cannabis Act. So very basically, one of the things I did was I wanted to make sure that it was clear that our ordinance complies with not just the Illinois Drug-Free Workplace Act, but the Federal Drug-Free Workplace Act as well. Remember, historically, it didn't matter, they were the same thing. They no longer will be, because cannabis is now going to be legal in the state of Illinois. So we're going to comply with both of them. The next thing I did, and again, I defined a controlled substance by what is in the federal statute, because the Illinois statute references that too, but now that they're outing cannabis, it could create confusion. So I referenced the federal government's definition. We're still list cannabis as a illegal drug. That does not mean that our employees cannot utilize cannabis in compliance with the state of Illinois law, because the Drug-Free Workplace Act simply prohibits the use of drugs on city premises while you're at work. And obviously, the state act allows us to do that as well. So we're not prohibiting people from being able to use it outside of work, just not at work. At least not in this ordinance. The second part I did was I actually cut and pasted, which is why I've got a huge run on section, sentencing in Section 2I, the, what I call the safe harbor in the Campus Control Act governing employers. Because it's almost impossible to test for impairment when you're utilizing cannabis, they create a safe harbor where an employer can essentially determine that somebody's impaired by utilizing the symptoms that are outlined in Section 2I. And I put that into the ordinance, so that if a supervisor sees somebody that manifests these specific articulable symptoms, slurred speech, glassy bloodshot eyes, problems with physical dexterity, accent, things like that, then we can presume that they're under the influence of cannabis at that time, and begin either testing procedures or at least send them home, so they don't create a danger to anybody else or themselves. And then again, I made it clear in Section 4, which really should be clear anyway, but they cannot only use or consume alcohol, controlled substances, and cannabis while at work or while they're on call to come to work. And on call, that is a specific portion of the Cannabis Control Act. It allows employers to say, look, if I give you 24 hours notice that you're going to be on call tomorrow, you cannot use cannabis during that period while you're on call. So I put that in here as well. So essentially, all I'm doing is taking this original ordinance and bringing it up to date in light of the new Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act.
Alderman Snow.
Going to open up a quasi-humorous, or, we, as aldermen, we're not here at City Hall on a regular basis all day long, but the mayor and the clerk are, and being elected officials. Out of curiosity, Mike, what does that do for that aspect? If, for instance, the mayor decides he wants to tie one on and come intoxicated on marijuana, does, how does that?
Only if he shares, it's got to be enough for everybody.
I was just curious how that, and we could throw that through all the state-type things, but I didn't know how that affects the elected.
You are correct in the sense that the mayor, the clerk, the treasurer, the alderman, you're not truly, you're not truly employees, you're elected officials. We can't just fire you. They would be in violation of the ordinance, what we do about it at that point, I don't know. I'd probably convince them to go home and sleep it off. But, but it really does apply to true employees. It's hard to apply that to an elected official, because you can't fire him.
It doesn't say anything about unusual consumption of food on these symptomatic things, though.
No, it does not. No, it does not. And I would point out that this is not the last time you're going to have to address the cannabis issue. Obviously, the council at a later date was going to have to discuss whether or not we're going to allow the sale of marijuana within corporate limits, et cetera, and whether we're going to tax it if we do allow it. That will have to come back, that's not part of this issue. This simply deals with the use of cannabis while at work.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the section. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Brereton. Do you have another question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So we have the police chief, and obviously Brent and Kip, they all have people who drive vehicles in the fleet, so is there, quote, is there a tolerance? Because I'm assuming the police department and potentially Public Works, because of snow emergencies or whatever, are all subject to call in at any given time. I didn't know what the scoop there is, or what.
The fact that they're subject to call at any given time does not play into this at all, because the state says we have to give 24 hours notice that they're on call. That scenario, we handle the same ways we handle alcohol or other drugs, for example, prescription medications that might impair. If we call them up and they say, I just had a fifth of Jack, I can't come in, we say, okay, don't come in, please. You're right, though, and this is, this is actually in a memo that, I don't know if it went out to the employees yet in payroll or not, Sean, I think goes in the next payroll, doesn't it?
This week.
This week's payroll.
Last sheet that they gave.
For example, while we will not prohibit public works employees from consuming cannabis, I point out in this memo to them that to the extent they are required to hold a commercial driver's license, and federal law requires testing for controlled substances under that commercial driver's license, and marijuana is still a controlled substance under federal law, if they test positive, their CDL can be suspended and/or revoked, in which case it jeopardizes their employment with the city of Baldear, because they can no longer do the job for which they're hired. And I suggest that they might think very carefully about where they want to partake in cannabis. We are still struggling, the chief of police and myself and the deputy chief, since how exactly I handle the law enforcement side of it, because the act, while it covers that aspect of it for CDLs, even talks in terms of the CDL law, and they may not be able to do, and we're allowed to enforce that federal law, because we can't control it, it's federal law. It also contemplates allowing police officers to use cannabis off duty. It says we cannot, we can prohibit their use while on duty. It infers the opposite. But also, federal law makes it a federal crime to possess a firearm or ammunition if you're a user of a controlled substance. All of a sudden, now you've got a police officer's got a gun and ammunition, and if they're using marijuana, they're violating federal law. I pointed that out in the memo as well. And we'll have to discern as to how we're going to approach that aspect of it in-house, and we'll probably come up with a policy that'll be determined, distributed to the bargaining unit. I know the fire chief would of course love to prohibit his employers also, I want to speak for him, but I guess he would. Unfortunately, paramedic licensing and fire licensing is strictly a province of the state, so that makes it a little bit more difficult to restrict them if we wish to.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So cannabis is a lot different anyway, because, you know, alcohol, you can tell when somebody's been drinking, and you can give them a BAC test, and it's either zero or it's point, whatever. Cannabis, you know, when you smoke that, stays in your system for an extended period of time, doesn't mean just because it's in your system that you're under the influence.
That is one of the greatest problems with the passage of the Cannabis Act, and specifically from a law enforcement perspective. Take away the employee, employee, employee. Take away the employee, employee, employer relationship, because it's the same issue. You pull somebody over, how do you prove they're under the, under the influence of cannabis at that point? You're stuck relying upon your old-fashioned field sobriety test, because if you take a chemical test, you're not going to get the results for thirty to sixty days. You know, it's just, and like you said, in the old way, you know, the old days, if it came out with any cannabis in that test, you could charge them for a violation of the Controlled Substances Act, either federal or state level. Now, what's the level? I mean, for, at least for DUI, they've got a presumptive amount built into the statute. Where they got that number, nobody knows. They kind of pulled it out of thin air. It doesn't actually mean you're impaired, but that's what they said. For purpose of employment, you're right, there's no presumptive number there, and the fact that they have some cannabis in their system does not necessarily mean they're impaired at that point. Doesn't mean they weren't at a rock concert the night before, or hanging out with their friends and family, happened to smoke, you know. It's, it's going to create a nightmare for everybody, because there is no good testing.
Alderman Snow.
The topic of the CDL, and maybe Alderman Stevens would be able to chime in, the, not everybody on the fire department's qualified to be able to drive the fire trucks.
You are not required to have a CDL to drive a fire truck.
No, okay.
You're not required, there's a non-CDL that they can have to, you know, drive the fire trucks, so.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All those in favor of approval of the motion that's now on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Crawford, may I have a second? Alderman Burton, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you.